Have you take your seats, please. We'll get moving into the regular agenda if I can find it. It's up here in all my notes. There we go. Yep. Called order. Well, I should have done this beforehand. So I gotta tell this funny story real quick before I get started. So we're doing scuba training. A lot of you guys have probably seen the recent news, which has not been good from the lake. As it would happen, the fire department has been scheduled for several weeks now to do some scuba certification to use a piece of equipment that we own. Great training. I am not a fish. I don't like scuba, but I'm learning and it is a lot of fun. The funny story is today we were doing one of the exercises and I I came up and part of it is going back down and when I went back down, I couldn't find whatever I was looking for. I don't even remember at this time, but I went as I went underwater. There was this fleeting moment of panic as I thought, oh, my God, I'm gonna drown. I can't breathe. And I took a breath and realized you have a regulator in. Yes, you can. So anyway, that was that was pretty funny. Yeah. So, okay. Apologize for running late. We I wanted to get those things out of the way or I wanted to cover those things before we get going. So call to order. If you would all stand for the invocation, Roxanne is gonna do that for us today and then we'll lead into the pledges.
All right. First, let's pray. Dear God, I did thank you for this evening. I thank you for this community. I thank you for all the staff here, all the workers, all the residents, and those of us on council who are working hard to make good decisions. Pray that you will give wisdom to us tonight and that all voices will be heard. Pray in Jesus' name. Amen. Okay, let's say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. And now the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, one and indivisible.
Thank you. All right. First up tonight is the department quarterly briefings, department heads. I'm a basket case up here. Ready, set, go. So I know, Council, you should have the packets which include the submissions from council. So that's not that one. So so it's actually underneath our I mean, I guess we can do that so that if our residents need to go, I think Michelle is Scott's no longer here. Keller's no longer here, correct? So Michelle, Nida, can you hold off? I'm gonna flip flop that real quick. Let's go ahead and do the single citizen comment. Please, ma'am. All speakers conduct themselves in an orderly and lawful manner. All speakers will be recognized prior to speaking. You will announce their name and address if you would please for inclusion into the minutes. State law prohibits the mayor or members of council for commenting on any statements or engaging in dialogue without an appropriate agenda.
Resort. Thank you, city council and mayor and our CFO for your time. And I am here to talk about for safety's sake, NPR needs a four-way stop at NPR Road and Tanyard slash 2483. Also known as the Four Corners. Had found to exit and enter our street to get home, even though that's a faster route there. Back. City council did an awesome job investigating, putting in a stopped. But the danger didn't. And so I'm here as a concerned citizen to say, please put in a four-way stop. It would be so simple. It's worth the life it may save. For safety's sake, NPR needs a four-way stop at Morgan's Point Road and Tanyard slash 2483. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, hello, city council and our ACM CFO. For this first quarter, this covers January 1 through March 31. And what you will see what we did for procurement. Well, let me wait. So you will see that I have a few different hats. So they are on here. I cover procurement, special project, grants and communications. So I will break them down in the next slide. For procurement, we went into the beta stage, January 7, 2025, and that was for our purchasing module. And we had our kickoff March 3, 2025. And this is currently up and running. For special projects, we had two RFQs. One was for the investment advisor. It went out March 4. And then stormwater engineering went out March 4 as well, the same day. Additional projects that were encumbered were our NPR comprehensive plan, which is everyone's favorite. And then we were working on the GST completion and getting the resolution to close out for the final payout, which we are, as of even this afternoon, working to get those last that last payout done. Another major project that was
Nida, could you tell me what GST is? I can't remember.
Ground storage tank. Something we work very closely on every day. In February, we met to have the strategic planning session. That was the large boards and we put all those up on what was gonna be the vision for the city to move forward. For grants, it was FEMA. We officially got FEMA and TIDOM on the same calendar date. That was in March 17. The reimbursement pending is 674,481 and 87 cents. And that was pending as of March. Also, another big grant that we do have is the AFA, the sidewalk agreement on 2043. It did get signed February 3. And that kickoff meeting was March 24, 2025. So very busy first quarter. And for the fun stuff now, communications. Communications, I did do a city website search of what are the residents, what are the people trying to search? Sales and use tax, 350 hits. Quarterly cleanup was 47, agendas 42. RFQs, actually, I was very surprised, was 19. And then the top rounding out five was ordinances. For our NPR minute, we have 564 subscribed, 364 on email and also 364 on text. So it looks like the same people on there. Social media, there was 82 social media posts, 2,310 likes on our social media. And then the news flash, just a couple, the month of January, one of the one that was most looked at was the weather delay, of course, when we had that big cold weather that came through on January 20. Roses for hoses was the top news flash for February and there was a water main break on in March 11, 2025. So that just kind of captures everything that is going on in communications. Sorry for my voice. It's a little gone.
Quick question on the ground storage tank. I know we had discussed an actual completion date and sort of doing an event to celebrate that.
Yes.
Is that still possible or is that sort of off the radar?
No. So what is tentatively, we were waiting to get everything closed out and cleaned and that's that's been a lot of work behind the scenes. We want to make sure that everything is complete. We want to make sure all the payups are done. We want to make sure that we have closed everything for it officially, even though the work is done. The main push in January that we were looking at was that clay valve that we were getting to close. However, that is absolutely something that would be a fantastic thing past and prior council to come together and have a turning of the valve ceremony, I think is what we coined it a couple of months ago.
It was really good.
Yeah. So tentatively, that is still on the radar and that would be a fantastic thing to bring. I just would feel more comfortable if we get everything closed out and everything is complete. Once I have an official confirmation from everybody and even the engineer also reached out today as well, too. So we just want to make sure everything is in place before we say, yes, let's turn the valve. Thank you.
Ms. Catrissa Admin.
Hello, hello. So admin services. Thank you. So with admin services, I handle utilities, permits, marina, and a few other things, but we're just gonna talk about utilities, permits and marina. So the first quarter saw a steady level of billing activity and account management. Account types range from activity, excuse active billing to final bills, new connections and delinquent accounts pending cutoff. As you can tell, we build bills issued should not have a dollar sign right there, but it was for the quarter, 6, 6,321 bills. Payments collected, we had 6,301 transactions. And we service water, garbage and marina. Penalties assessed was 579 accounts and deposits collected was $5,108. For permits, permit activity remains steady, reflecting consistent development, interest and enforcement activity in the city. Staff ensured timely review and inspection scheduling, supported code compliance efforts and assisted homeowners and builders with inquiries. With inspections, we did, or I should say, Mike did 90 inspections for the quarter. He reviewed 75 plans and code enforcement cases was 24. For marina, we have operationally, the marina remain active with ongoing monthly slip rentals, seasonal prep, new tenant processing and continued customer support. Staff also fielded customer service inquiries, handed handled billing questions and prepared for increased summer demand. And we show the revenue from what we have for marina. That's all.
Thank you, ma'am.
Evening. How are y'all? Which way do I swipe? I've never done a dating thing like this. So that's left. There we go. All right. I really haven't. So our quarter one report going January through March, we have right now 16 commissioned firefighters. And of the 16 commissioned firefighters is a breakdown up there of their level of certification. Of the 16, we have at least six that are advanced of some type, which is a pretty good record for a combination apartment of our size. Professional development is additional certifications. You'll see that the overwhelming majority of our staff have additional certifications in wildland disciplines instructor, fire officer, and are able to operate both our aerial apparatus and our engine. So that's what you're looking at on the commissioned firefighters portion. Education services, we delivered 162 hours of education to our troops over the first quarter. We track that based on the ISO standards. You'll see that tracked by departmental stuff, stuff with the OMD, which is the Office of Medical Director. That's our medical training we do. Municipal stuff, which would be associated with the city, like if we do a city training on city policy, something of that nature. And the remaining balances are federal and state to maintain our certifications is paramedics, firefighters or anything that would fall into that those auspices. For staffing, we had 4,571 hours worked in the first quarter. Of that, 2757 was career firefighters. You have a total of five career firefighters. We have a vacancy for a sixth that was approved last council meeting. Three of the five work a 53-hour work week, two work a 40-hour work week, and that's generally speaking. But that's where that comes from. We only had 31 hours of overtime, but you can see 986, almost 1,000 hours of volunteer activity. So we still have a robust volunteer engagement as well. Certified EMS providers, we have quite a few, starting with EMS physician, Dr. Rackliff, who actually resides in Morgan's Point currently. He's new to the area or new to the city. We have five licensed paramedics, four paramedics. You have a total of 10 advanced life support folks on your staff. We also have two advanced EMTs. That's a bridges the gap between an EMT, a very basic certification and the full paramedic certification. They can do IVs, airways, different things like that. And then last but not least, professional development, we have one administrative record and two EMS educators. And you're looking at yours truly, the administrative record for the Texas Department of State Health Services. We manage both the fire department and certifications for the police department and we administer CE training through our department for both agencies. If you look up at the top, our breakdown of calls, about 66% of what we do is rescue and EMS. That's a pretty good constant anywhere from 65 to 70% of the calls we run in this community are medical calls. They're not necessarily fire calls. The balance, 5% is a hazardous condition. You have a CO, carbon monoxide detector go off in your house. You have a gas odor or something like that. That'd be a hazardous condition. Assist the public. You fall, you call, we come, we don't haul, we pick you up. That's as assist the public or just some general information. And then fires were 12%. Our response time in the city limits was five minutes and six seconds. I did not post the other response time at 7:56 of memory serves. That would include the county area redacting some responses to Slatto and some other outline outliers really for our data. So that's all I have to offer. Do you guys have any questions about our first quarter of the year? Okay, thank you.
Act a lot in one page.
Thank you, Chief. Somebody's somebody's got to swipe some way to figure out who's next.
All right, it's me.
You are.
Cool. So mine's gonna be way shorter than that. So the public work side. Of course, believe it or not, we're still doing brush pickup. We'll probably be doing that for the next couple of years. The mowing has really kicked off because of all the rain we've got. So we're working on that daily work orders. We held a quarterly cleanup in January. The next one will be next month. And then work order totals were 31. Those are the ones that are turned in city hall. Of course, that's not what I mean. We don't do daily work orders for everything we do, but those are the ones that are turned in the city hall.
Are we getting, and this is for whoever can answer. So I know we have the online portal for residents to submit work orders. How is that activity or is that being used?
I have no idea. Anybody? I can tell you I have not got any.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I'm just does it? That's what I was wondering. I know I've used it just for curiosity. So yeah, and it works. But I was just wondering if that's something that we need to kind of ramp up the I don't want to say advertising, what sort I'm looking for advertising on that's there we go. Yeah, public knowledge campaign, awareness campaign, because it seemed, I mean, it
People do like it.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's definitely beneficial if we can just kind of continue to drive that home. So Chief.
I can walk away if you do. All right. So I'm gonna try to make my brief. So the first quarter of 2025, we issued 235 warnings, 114 citations. We've had 24 offenses reported to us and 26 incidents. Incidents being information reports, things that do not actually classify as offenses by law. Out of those, we made 20 arrests. And 15 of those were for the actual offenses and then five were for warrants. Our response time for the quarter was four minutes and 58 seconds or four and a half minutes. Sorry, four and a half minutes, not 58 seconds. Sorry. Makes a big difference when you talk about that. So out of that, out of the quarter, we patrolled 18,947 miles across the city. We conducted 289 house watches. Area checks, these are parks, specific areas that we might be having crime rate might be ramping up. We target specific areas of the of the city. We conducted 1,475 of those area checks. And then 666, I don't like that number, but 666 security checks of our businesses and and city facilities throughout the quarter. Animal services, we have animal control. We call it animal services. Control sounds a little bit, you know, harsh. So we have animal services. And so during the quarter, we he handled our animal control, our animal services officer handled 29 dogs, one cat, and then 11 what we would classify as other or wild animals. So skunks, raccoons, deer. And the list goes on. Squirrels. As far as our calls for service go, in January, we had 1,083. February, you had 1,140 and in March, we had 1,331. And so as you can see, the trend for the year for and for the first quarter is is upward. And so as far as our staffing is concerned, we have for the quarter, we had 10 full-time officers, one part-time. We have zero reserves, which we're fixing to try and ramp that up on the recruitment of reserves. And then we have one volunteer, which is my PIO telecommunicator. Of the dive team, so we operate the dive team of the dive team for the first quarter, they had five deployments. Of those five deployments, one was a body recovery. One or three were vehicle recoveries and one was an other request. And we have about 25 active members on our dive team. And of course, Jimbo plugged the fire department earlier with their training of their new equipment. And of course, the dive team is assisting them in their training of their new equipment.
I'm gonna I'm gonna do you one better on that because for those who don't know, Officer Gus McMillan is a master diver and he's actually heading up our training. Based on my assessment from today, that explains that number 666 because Gus is the devil.
Does anybody have any questions for me? No comment.
On the area checks.
Yep.
So that's parks, stuff like that.
Yes. Yeah, that would be our city parks. And then we would classify area checks, not just parks, but let's just say we were having particular areas of the city that maybe we that we wanted to have targeted patrols from more routinely. Those are what we would call the area check. So an area check could consist of just to say Sycamore Street, for example, we would do an area check of Sycamore Street if we were having some issues down Sycamore Street that we wanted to target more patrol areas of. Any other questions?
I'm gonna give you the report for public utilities. For those who don't know me, my name is Stephen Pitts and I recently took over as director in March. So some of these numbers between January and February, except for the consumption for the water and then the wastewater treated, they're not gonna be crazy accurate because I just had limited limited data from what I have. So we'll do the wastewater first. As always, we always do daily, weekly, monthly and quarterly reports. Total gallons treated going into the lake was 352,673. Our average BOD was less than two. Our average TSS is less than two and our average ECOI is less than two, which is where we want to be. Water distribution, we had six new service installations. We had seven meters we replaced. We had 16 leaks, two boil water notices, 119 meter re reads, 94 lock offs due to non-payment. 163 work orders. We didn't spray any herbicide. Same with wastewater. We have monitoring reports that we have to do daily. Total water we took in from Temple is 31,786,600. Any questions?
All right. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, all for your presentations and you guys put a lot of hard work into that and keeping us up to date on what's going on and our residents in the know. We appreciate it. Moving on. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have two items under there, the minutes 2506 and 2006, sorry, and 007, which are minutes from our meetings on May 13 and May 27. Counsel, if there are no changes or if there are, I'd like to hear them. And if there are no changes, I'll entertain a motion to approve both of those under the consent agenda.
So move.
My second.
Okay, no discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Oh, yeah, we have to wait for Dorothy. She's time delayed on us. So yeah, okay, unanimous consent. Yeah. Okay, thank you. Resolutions, we have 25020, which is discuss consider resolution to revise the catalytic converter grant. Matt, you want to kind of cover what the changes are under the revision real quick, please?
The only changes to the resolution were adding the people's names. So it's Dennis Baldwin as the city manager, Mary Tolman as the finance director and myself as the project manager or director, one of the two. I don't know how they titled it, but that was it. They wanted specific names instead of titles only.
I have a question. When we revise a resolution, do we repeal the one that we just approved last month? Because last month we approved 2517. And then this is the same one you said name changes?
That's that's correct. I would defer to Neil on that one. But yeah, same same resolution, just adding names to it.
Just doing amendment.
He said we are just amending the prior resolution.
So 17 was what it should be.
Yeah. So counsel, if you'll make that note, then so it would be resolution 25017 as amended. Okay. Entertain a motion to approve that amendment 25017 with the names added. Thank you, Matt. Can I get a motion for that, please? Okay, motion with Sam second. With Roxanne, any other discussion? All those in favor? All right, all those opposed? All right, motion carries five nil. All right, moving on to the ordinances. So this was supposed to be addressed in the workshop. We ran out of time, so we're gonna move it here. Ordnance 25010, discuss consider revising ordinance for the city Morgan's Resort, that's us, to adopt the 2021 edition of the International Fire Code. So by the way, for those who don't know, our city manager is out. He's doing well, from what I understand, won't go into too much detail. He's doing well. So from what I gather, if you have anything, this is just it was previously adopted as a resolution. It needs to be adopted as an ordinance to codify it is the way it was explained to me. Does that sound about right? So essentially, the the Texas Fire Code that was adopted previously under resolution, like I said, making an ordinance makes it law, chief. So all we're looking to do is change that from a resolution to ordinance 25010 for the IFC. I will entertain a motion to approve that ordinance.
So move.
Okay, Sam second.
So do we repeal? So do we repeal the resolution?
No.
Do we have to repeal something in order to do something?
I understand we're approving an amendment. That's all.
Well, this one is going. And so Neil, yeah. So an ordinance trumps a resolution. Essentially, it wipes the resolution away. Neil is the way I read it. Because the a resolution is more time constrained, so X amount of time. And an ordinance is essentially codifying it as a law until it is repealed by another ordinance, if that makes sense.
Okay.
Okay, all those. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? I'm sorry, Dorothy, go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah, I know, I'm trying to, yeah.
It is a little delayed.
It's a little delayed on the, well, I'm not gonna say that, that's rude. Okay, that takes care of all of our primary business. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, we are going to adjourn the regular session, and we are gonna move into executive session. We will adjourn into executive session for discussion of personal matters pursuant to section 551.074, and deliberation regarding real property pursuant to section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code. And then, we will come back out of this and back into regular session. I don't know how long this is gonna take. You're more than welcome to stick around, as always. If you don't, thank you for attending, so...
We need to take his picture. All right.
Okay. On my side, so the 1922 is a back to the regular session again for convene. And first, the 25-0-1, discuss and consider a motion for a judge as the court of justice.
Okay. All right. I would, I would, I would like to make a motion and proudly make a motion that we accept Judge Larry D. Wilkie as our municipal court judge for Morgan's Point Resort.
Okay, I've got a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? Okay, you got a second? Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Sorry Dorothy, thank you. All right, unanimous. Judge Wilkie, welcome aboard, sir.
Well, I want to take a minute here to introduce my wife here. It's my wife, Andy, been married thirty-one years. Want her here.
Nice to meet you.
Definitely glad to be here. And I'm, again, I'm gonna be your judge, I'm gonna be your judge. Okay? And again, like I said, I'm an introvert, so I listen more than I talk. But so glad to be here.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Welcome aboard, we're glad to have you.
Okay, so time is now nineteen twenty-four, seven twenty-four for you non-Army people. We will adjourn out of regular session and reconvene back into executive session. So, Matt, if you'd shut all that stuff down.
All right, we're back in regular session at 20:38. And the catch-up stuff, let's see, we're actually... Actually, we have to adjourn regular session now and go back to the workshop. So, we will now adjourn the regular session at 2038. And we will... Okay. Okay, yeah, YouTube. Okay, so back into, we're now back, it is 2038 again still, a lot going on there. We are back into the workshop. Let me find my workshop notes. So, we, I think the only thing we had left to address was... Yeah, yeah. That's all you.
Okay, good evening. In your packet, I think you have, you should have a PowerPoint, I also emailed it. Okay, so where are we on the 2022 audit? As we mentioned earlier, the bank reconciliation for 2223 is complete. Yes, all the interim testing has already been submitted, submitted today. We are still pending, which, there's nothing we can do about it, one council person who's no longer on council. So, there's one, and then there's one staff questionnaire that we still need to submit. So, those will get submitted tomorrow on the 2223 audit. We did get billed, and we did pay for the first, I guess, the first half of what was left of the, of the audit, of the half of the half, I guess, the quarter. And the journal entries for all the revenue that needed to get fixed in the system has totally been completed for 2223. Yes, so now we, we're on the last part of the final testing for the year end. We have two more files and a total maybe of like four files, but out of everything that they gave us, we're over the 75% threshold of submission. So, we should hopefully, we're hoping, we would get the same type of audit rating, if not hopefully a little better. So, that's the good news for 2223. 2324... When, when they... When they'll be completed with it, ma'am? Yes.
When the, when the audit will be presented for 202223?
No, I don't have a date for that, I can ask them though, because we're meeting, meeting with Latoya tomorrow over the phone.
I'm sorry, say it again?
I will be meeting again with Latoya over the phone for the revisions of what we submitted to them for 2223. They have some documents that they, they need to go through. For 2324, the bank reconciliation, we're at 90% complete. All of the administrative documents for the questionnaires, we're still collecting those. We already have the audit engagement letter, so you can kind of scratch that part off. The journal entries that need to get completed right now, I'm sorry, for 2324 right now that's pending, is, I guess, in the conversion, this was discovered, I guess, this weekend with Peacock, where they did the conversion from 2324 to 2425, because they're working on both years at the same time right now. The utility revenue, and I know this was brought up before, and I don't know how, when they, maybe when they moved it from one year to the next in prior years, it did not convert correctly. And so, right now, we have the money in the bank, so if you look at what we gave you on the revenue versus expenditure on the report, not all of the revenue... How can I explain this? When you look at the revenue, we project, we're going to get so much in property tax, we're going to get so much in utility billing, right? So, there is a budget, in the budget, in that line item with a projected revenue amount, right? So, it's there, but we haven't collected it yet, right? It's a projection. So, what happened is, and this may have happened previously, you have this estimation. But when the conversion takes place, and in this case, or you receive money, it has to be entered into the system to make sure that what's in the GL, you actually received it, otherwise it just stays as a projection. I guess that's the easiest way I can kind of sort of explain it. Well, we have the projection of this revenue in the budget for revenues, but it's not entered in as being received in the GL for 2324, on the revenue part. So, I talked to Nicola today, and that, it not only affects the 2324 that rolls plus the 2425 right now. So, besides a couple of things that we need to, to go in and fix for the bank reconciliation, that's the major holdup right now for 2324 and even 2425. No, 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 what I'm saying is, for like 2324, they did a conversion to go to FundView, from Ncode to FundView. Utility billing did not start at the same time, they started mid-October, early November from what I understand. So, when that conversion happened, some of the information did not carry over into the system. So, let's say I project you're going to have $100, okay, you have $100. I guess you could say it as a credit, right? But you still need to collect that money, and you need to record it in the general ledger that it's received. We have it in the bank, because it's in the bank, so you have $100 in the bank, but you don't have it in the general ledger. That it, that it's right accounted for, there as a receipt. Because we estimate, this is how much we're going to get on property tax, you estimate this is how much you're going to get on your sales tax, you know, even... No, they're working on it right now. That, I mean, that's, that is the big, we can't start the 20, the reason I bring this up is because we cannot start 2324 audit part until that portion gets, that piece is fixed. Nicola. Well, she, she's familiar with the software, they've, she's in contact with Amy. I think I brought this up, that in one of the other years, there was also a glitch in what they were looking at, and I don't know when it was broncored, but it was like a 1.5 million dollar issue, going back to one of your other audits, going, so this is... This part, some, what happened with, what happened with FundView? Yes, 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 and so, what happened is, when you do the conversion, you have to go in and verify that the accounts are set up correctly, you know, that you have the background of, of the, the system runs some... They're connected with other account numbers in the back. So, if I go in and I enter in an account number, it should be linked as a receivable, and then it gets put into that account number that says it goes to utility, or it's going to go here, it's going to go there. And I guess what happened is, when they did the conversion, because Ncode... Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so, when the conversion happened with Ncode and, and FundView, because of, I guess, the account... So... Yes, yeah, it is, and, but they did assure me, she did tell me, that her goal to get all of that done is the end of June. So, for 2324, we should have, be able to start, our target date is July 1st of 2324, the 2324 turnover of the bank reconciliation, so that we can start getting the testing done.
So, the person at Peacock that's the third party reconciling our bank accounts, she's the person reconciling the general ledger to the subsidiary ledger for utility billing?
Right now, yes, to make sure that it is recorded in the general ledger, because it was not being recorded when the conversion took place, it was not, the revenues were not being recorded accurately. Which is the same kind of issue that I've been, it's, 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 the, the account numbers that we have right now in FundView are accounts, it's an accounting system, numbering system, that's very different than Ncode. So, if in Ncode, you say, my address is, you know, 584 Morgan's Point Resort, but then, all of a sudden, you change the street address to 501, you know, you're not going to get your mail, right? You're just, it's not going to happen. Well, for the revenue part of coming in, that's what, there's a couple, a couple of, I guess, complications. One is, the conversion did not take place to bring in the utility revenue. The other issue is that a lot of what was entered in, in, and, and we're ahead of the game, because we caught a lot of the errors already in 2324, because we caught them in 2425. So, a lot of those errors that we were finding, they were kind of identical to 2324, so that's how, as we were fixing 2425, we were kind of also fixing 2324. That's why the percentages of the bank reconciliations are a lot higher, because we were able to fix quite a bit. But we're talking about a lot of transactions, and, you know, just going back to things that were not necessarily inputted into FundView, because we just started using the purchasing module, and they started using a, a different... For utility billing, I think they moved to a, some kind of check capture, something where they pay with a QR code or something like that, how the payment, how the, how the residents pay. So, when that gets recorded in, there was an issue because of how the system did not convert, is what I understand. And so, I did ask Nicola, if they could, I think it would be a really good idea, if you all wanted them, for them to come in and speak to you, so that way you could ask the questions, because, I mean, you're, I think, based on the background, you know, everybody's in a different level when it comes to accounting, and what needs to get done to reconcile the account. And so, I think it's, they're doing what needs to get done, so that we can process our audits quicker. Now, I do want to just kind of remind you that we started with Peacock really in April. And so, I know that it can be a little frustrating, because I know that you've been waiting for this for so long. But Peacock is really helping us as much as they possibly can to get this fixed. Yeah, and she, and, and she's, and that's why I think maybe, because they can see where, the amount of work that has taken place in such a short amount of time, I think maybe that would give you all a little bit more, you know, confidence, or feel like, you know what, because I can, I, I can tell that there's, there can be some level of, you know, I guess, frustration and, and stuff like that, because you want it done, but there's only so much that can get done in a, in a short amount of time. And they really are... Yes, and I, you know, again, I go back to Amanda's been helping out tremendously, Nida's helped out. We were able to get some reports, because there's just so much that needs to get done on the audit standpoint, that it really needs to be, everybody has to have all hands on deck to get this done, because we can do it. It just, we all need to work together to get it done, you know? And so, it's, I was thinking about this, it's been six... Oh, yeah, it is, it's, it's definitely something. So, on the bank reconciliations, the good news is for 2425, we're at 75%, which to me is amazing, because we're, can't be at 100%, because we're not 100% of the, of the, of the year over, right? But for everything that they've done for this year so far, we're at 75%. And I just, I really would like for you all to kind of like consexualize. They've really only been working with this year for less than 90 days. And in less than 90 days, we're at 75% for 2425. It is, it really is, and so, I know that you all are frustrated, I know that it's, it's, it's a lot, but in the end, it'll, it's, it is a chore, you know? Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I was, I was here yesterday till 2:00 in the morning, because we, I know that, that this is real important to the city and for everything, for future fund revenue, for everything, so... So, so the, while the funds are received and recorded, that kind of explains all of that that's there. Budget amendments to recognize anticipated revenue for departments. Does it copy twice on here? Okay, so, right now, and I, and again, it was, it's been a team effort, but for FEMA right now, we did get that extra amount of money. So, we're at, Nida helped out with that. And so, next meeting, and I know when I spoke to, to Dennis, he did say the city manager that he wanted to have a special called meeting, so I'm hoping he comes back next week. So, then we need to sit down and schedule, because we do have that anticip, and, that money from FEMA that we need to recognize and figure out where we're going to put it. And so, that's, that's another thing, that we're going to have to start bringing some more budget amendments. And then, if there's additional revenue that's anticipated, then that'll be another budget amendment, to reconcile that, on that part. Now, as far as the insurance, thank goodness, it is a blessing, that we only went up 9% for the exact same coverage to renew. Now, at the last meeting, you did ask for different options, so I did bring that up. And that's something that, when I, last time I spoke to Dennis, that we were going to review to see, revenue-wise, what could the district support, because when we approve a plan, I just want to, you know, remind, we, if you look at the proposal, there's also the employee contribution for their dependents. So, if we were to pick, and as it is, from what I understand, I was not here, the city decided to help pay for a portion, a percentage, of the employee coverage, of their, of the dependent coverage. That was... Yes, ma'am, that is absolutely correct, and that is why, and that, and that's why, when, when I sat down and, and I spoke to... when, when I sat down and, and I spoke to Dennis about this, we said, okay, well, if we adjust the coverage, it's going to cost more money. And okay, we'll say, well, we're going to pick it up maybe for the employee, but you can't say, I'm going to have this coverage for the employee, per se, and have a different plan for the dependents. They go together, they go together, right? And, and, and that is why, when I spoke to, and we spoke to, I spoke to Dennis, he said, you know what? The safest thing right now is, because we're not too sure right now with the revenues, we don't know, we know, I know he really talked about wanting to get the streets and all this other stuff done, that the best thing to do would probably be just keep the coverage at 9%. Because if we go somewhere else, it's going to be higher. It is going to be higher. We were very, very lucky, we were very blessed, that we were part of a poll where other cities did not have the hits that we had. And so, to ensure that the employees get at least the same coverage, and that we don't know for the dependents whether or not some of the employees can pay an added cost to cover their dependents, we were probably going to recommend that we stay exactly, renew exactly as it is for this year. That would be the safest bet for everybody.
How much is a 9% increase in employee-only, the city's portion, the city's cost involved? For a 9% increase in healthcare costs?
I don't have that for you right now. I can email it to you, because I also need to calculate also what the employee dependent coverage is going to be as well. Because I think that also is something that, I mean, I, I would want to give you that all together. And I would need to go back and see how many employees have what type of coverage? Is it just a spouse, or is it the family coverage? It's, I can, I can give you just...
My understanding is, in the 25, in the 24, 25 budget, it said that the city was funding, we were funding part of the employee dependent coverage, that that was $5,000. And so, that would have been the difference back in the budget package, the formal budget package, it's been there. I just looked it up.
Yes.
So, um, I just need to, I, I think as a council, we need to know, okay, 9% increase in healthcare costs, I think it's what?
I agree. And I'll, and I'll send that to you, and, and I, what I can do right now is like, we have like three employees that when, an employee that had to drop their dependents because it was too expensive, and they had a life-changing, and, and they said they, they couldn't afford it, right? And so, I kind of feel like, you know, I would like to give you, this is what is for the employee, but then also so that you can see what is it going to cost for the dependent coverage as well. I think that would be, that, that would be a, I, I just haven't had time to go employee by employee to see who has what coverage, so that I can calculate it for you. And I'm going to have, and, and, and I needed to speak to Jason and the people that we have from the insurance company to see what else, I mean, I don't want to say I want to haggle, but I kind of want to see if I can, what else, if there is anything else they can possibly do, you know, because I, I'm worried about some of the employees being able to pay for their dependent coverage. That's my, you know, for some, some, like for the director, sure, that's my, that's where my... Yes, yeah. Yes, and I know that, and that's why, you know, when we say 9%, right? For them, it could be really 15 or 20, right? Because you were paying a portion, and now they're, we're not going to pay it anymore. And now, you know, it's just a, it's kind of like another movie target. Oh, yeah, I'll email it to everybody. I just didn't have time to, to get that done for you before this meeting. Yeah, I don't, I, I don't know, I'd have to look, like, there's just so many different factors. Yeah, yeah, I think that's, that's what I'd like to do. So, you can see, this is what they have, and then we have some employees that are not, they don't have, we don't pay for that, for their insurance, even though they're, they're our employee, but they're with their spouses under their spouse's plan. So, if I were to run, okay, this is how many employees we have, this is how much it's going to be, I just need to go employee by employee to find out for sure if we're paying for every employee. And then, I, I would think that even if it goes up 9%, and some others decide to go with another, with their spouse, then would that impact that we have less employees? I don't know.
Yeah, you can't predict that. So, you have to forecast basically, because you don't know what the employees are going to do. Now, it's in my understanding that you have to get a decision to TML by July.
No, it's, the renewal that we have to submit, I believe, was due, for the renewal was June the 18th. We have to solidify the plan, I believe, and turn everything in by July. I think it's on the paper that I... Yeah, it's on the letter, it's there. Okay, so that is the insurance update, which, that's the, that was the, that was the really good news, that it only really went up 9%. So, that was, that was, that was really good. I think that's all I have, unless you all have any other questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thank you. We're working, we really are.
Thank you, we're so invited, thank you.
Bye.